Welcome, everybody, to the Commissioner Meeting, 17th of March. Let's all stand and just pledge allegiance together, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Beautiful day out there. Doesn't make you want to be in here very long, does it? All right, so we've approved the minutes for the March 4th meeting, accounts payable vouchers, and payroll dockets.
Will we make a motion, we approve all three as submitted?
I second that.
Any more questions or comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And first up, here we have Mr. Richard Carter. How are you today, Richard?
I'm doing pretty good. I have all the paperwork I normally have since I had a meeting that ran late in Cincinnati and I didn't get back until Fort Hock.
Uh-oh.
And it was rushed to get here. But still looking for that Second Amendment meeting or Preservation Act for the Second Amendment. And I don't know when that's going to be scheduled and so forth, but we should get on with that. And that brings me to sort of the notes. As you know, in the new 1.5 trillion bill they just sent, that this county will go broke under the law enforcement requirements that you now have. They have stated in there that the ATF will come into your county, your city, your state, and deputize your law enforcement officers as ATF deputies. Didn't say who's going to pay for it or anything. Their job will be to, and I got a whole stack on this, stats on this NICS, but I didn't have time for it. But their job will be to run down the NICS checks denied, which in the law itself said that there's a 90% error in the NICS system. The ATF says they don't have the time, the money, or anything else to do it, so they're going to deputize law enforcement to do all this work for them. And the numbers are staggering for this county. And I thought I put one down here, but it's, you would have about 1,533,978 NICS to run down. What you have to do, even a pile of paperwork that they require. You have to find everybody that was denied. You have to see why they were denied. You have to report on what they should do about them being denied, and it goes on and on and on. But they're going to deputize your county attorneys too. And they are going to be the ones that are going to be ready to prosecute these people. They don't even have one tenth of 1% of prosecution in the federal level that they can make stick. What they're doing, they're sticking law enforcement in the states, the counties, and the cities, but doing all this work. They buried it so far down in the bill, it's thousands of, and it's down in the 1,000 section somewhere. It's about two or three paragraphs. And if you really want to know what the gist of it is, you could look at the one that was called Vile Against Women's Act. They just jury rigged it and threw that in there because they couldn't get it passed otherwise. But it did pass, and now you're stuck with it. And the next item I have is on the planning commission and zoning. I understand one of you people are on that. You were it, huh?
Yep.
I called the auditors up to see what kind of oversight they had, whatever, and she told me who was on it and so forth, but I could find no real oversight. Who's responsible to see how they do their job, if they do the job, and so forth. I assume they come to you for the money.
For the money.
For the money.
For...
Their department.
The Plan Commission? Well, there's a, they don't get paid to do Plan Commission. I mean, do we set aside funds to try to clean up places? That's the biggest place we're setting aside money, but yes, we do set aside some money there, but they don't get paid.
Well, the reason I'm going to be looking at it is, I read in the Courier, and I don't know if it's true or not, but they have it in there, is they're going to put in a 50-acre solar farm. And that...
I mean, there are people proposing solar farms around the county.
Around the county.
We are, the Plan Commission is looking to put in an ordinance to put requirements on those solar farms.
I was about to say, I went through your 174 pages, and I could find nowhere in there where it says that you can put it on agriculture land, where you can put it on commercial land, where you can put it on high commercial land, or anyplace else. So now you're going to say you're going to stick it somewhere.
Well, now we're going to put together an ordinance that specifies those requirements.
Where they can put it.
Well...
What the categories are.
Sure, I mean, if it's...
And if you can do that, that brings me to another article in the Courier on Big Shot out on Deputy Pike, where you have said that they can't put a firing range on their land because it's not in the ordinance. So therefore, you're telling me right now, you can change the ordinance so they can do it.
No, I didn't say we're going to change the ordinance. I never said that at all. So why would you, why would, no, why would you put that in my mouth? I mean, we tried to, no, 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 no.
You should change the ordinance.
Well, okay, we are going to update the ordinances.
You should change the ordinance.
Sure, but that case, that case, they had an option to appeal, and they chose not to, right?
Well...
Yes, they did. So that was, that was the problem there.
They're private, they're limited on funds.
Well, that's why you have zoning. So if people around you don't want that to happen, you have the option of standing up and saying, "We don't want that to happen."
Yes.
And enough people did.
I understand that there's only one family.
Well, I'm not sure who told you that. Probably the people who are running the lawsuit, but anyway.
But...
You might want to get a complete story on that.
It's just like, you know, I know you have the capability to do it now because of the jail. Because I don't know how that was zoned, but it wasn't zoned for jail usage, for the county jail.
It was for heavy manufacturing. Sure, we had to go, we had to go to the BZA, the Board of Zoning Appeals, and ask for them to change it, or give us a conditional use, or a...
I'm concerned that I think there's a little bit of not equality in the, on these decisions.
People had the opportunity to come and say, "We don't want you to build it there. We publicized we were putting a jail there for a very long time," so...
The reason I want to know, what I really want to know is, who do I send my Freedom of Admittive Information Form to to get all some specific details I want, is that you?
Yeah, I've sent it to the Plan, Planning Office, Surveyor's Office. She'll take care of getting those, getting that information. I'm not sure, I mean, you want a copy of the lawsuit, is that what you want?
No, I just, I just want on some of the decisions and so forth, and...
The minutes are there.
Yeah, because...
Minutes are probably...
Going through 174 pages.
Well, would you, would you rather us not have anything and let, we could just get rid of zoning, then people could do what they want? That's not exactly what we want. Well, you went through 1,000 pages on the Omnibus Bill and could tell us that. 200, I think it's 238 pages is not very big compared to that.
But on the federal law, and that, I'll have details on that at your next meeting, because there's no way that we can afford to have federal agents come in and deputize our people that we pay to do their jobs. That's why I want the Second Amendment Preservation Act, because they want you to go over and run down all these federal crimes. And as I say, their prosecution rate is less than 1/10th of 1% of convictions. And I don't know how we can stop it. It all came about because Missouri passed a Second Amendment Preservation Act, and that's why all this got stuck in there. Because Missouri said anybody, government agent in the state of Missouri that was assisting federal ATF on federal gun laws would be fined $50,000 and five years in jail. That's the reason that got stuck in the, they're trying to go around that. But that's why they stuck it in that 1,000-page bill. And that's all I had today, but I didn't have time to grab all of my stats on the NICS system and so forth. But we need to find out how they're going to pay, pay our people, and how much force we're going to have to increase, because I don't think we got a lot of law enforcement people that can be running around the county checking out people that failed the NICS check. With that, thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Rick Solly. You're up.
Officer...
Good, good. It's a nice evening out there.
Been in office all day. All right, have numbers for the renewals on the property. Everything's pretty much the same as before. It's, it's still with Travelers. We'll just thumb through here and I'll hit some of the highlights. First one, I mean, page five just gives the listing of all the property locations. Page six is where it mainly starts on your building and your business personal property. Comes in at $45,845,635, which that was raised from last year for inflation. Usually four or five, you know, right now with everything it is, it's, so it's a good bump. Going on. On page seven, you have your, more or less your bells and whistles that they throw in on that policy that we've always had on there. None of them have changed. Your, what do you got? Fine arts at a million and different things. We increased valuable papers to $2 million, and ordinance at $2 million. So everything in there has stayed the same. Still have $250,000 on business income. $10 million on earthquake, $5 million on flood. On page 10. Going on, you got your crime, $100,000 with a thousand deductible. Your spoilage at $250,000, which that was raised for Health Department.
Vaccines.
Yeah. Your deductibles. $50,000, $25,000, got $2,500 on, on all other. $50,000 on earthquake, $25,000 on flood. On page 16, miscellaneous property, $1,382,334. That's the voting machines at $672,000. The polling pads, $56,950. Laptops. Canon scanner, computers, that's all in that, more or less. You asked about, do we need to change it since we're relocating them from the Health Department to the annex, and it's on a floater, so as long as we have...
Address doesn't matter, then it's good. And if they're safe and sorry, then it's...
Contractors equipment, I got that from Vicki. $2,517,240 on their current inventory. That's, everything else is there, stay the same. Then you get into your general liability, $1 million, $2 million. They've changed the format of this a little, where it's complicated. You have your general liability, employee benefits liability, it's still at $1 million. Your law enforcement liability, $1 million. Deductible on that's still $25,000, stayed the same. Public entity management liability, still $1 million. Public entity employment-related practices, still $1 million liability. Your auto. Have 73 auto, 12 trailers. We've added five auto and four trailers since last renewal. I mean, five new ones, I guess. We've added more than that and taken some off, but we got five more than we had before. Had the trailer that Troy put on, the MA trailer, I think was from Scott County. Three signed trailers, and a couple of 2022 interceptors, a police responder, so...
We got a plane? Did we get a flight?
Yeah.
Get the golf cart? You got one? The golf cart?
Yeah, there's, there's that, here's a golf cart. I didn't even think about putting that on the insurance, but...
No, did not. And we got, don't you have the, the forerunner downtown still in the...
No, it's, well, it says John, we have the John Deere gator, but there's also a, there's a club car, utility car, kind of thing. I didn't even think about adding that, but I can see the information.
Okay, yep. So let me know. Don't be quiet. What else you got in your pocket over there? Going on, you have your umbrella still for a million. And then the premium summary page, which I'm sure everybody wants to hear about. Not. Comes in at $250,951, which is an increase of $46,335 over last year. And the main thing is, like I said, we've added five vehicles, three vehicles, three tra, or four trailers. We updated the property coverage and then the losses. The losses that, when they sent me the quote, said they had to take, because I thought we were going to come in at a 10% increase, and when they sent me the quote, they said they couldn't hold it at that because of losses for the last three years are at 102%. So they've taken it, they've paid out more in the last three years than they've taken in, and that's why they're taking more.
Is that like either the tort claims and stuff?
A lot of it. I mean, I can go through them, but I don't like to in front of them. The, I mean, that's the main, that's the main part. And we're still, still looking for cyber. Without the MFA, that nobody will touch it. I had five companies that I was waiting to hear back from, and all of them turned it down until we get the MFA implemented. And I talked to Randy about it, and he said, "Right now, a lot of county, cities are going without it until they get that implemented, and there's not, nobody will touch them just because of the high claims they're paying out." And they know, I mean, as far as like the hospital, for instance, I mean, it's, I mean, when that happens, it's a big number.
Oh, we're working very diligently to resolve it.
Well, I've seen Ovation out there quite a bit, and I've been, Sarah and, you know, if they got hit, they're going to get where we at. She's been probably tired of hearing from me, but... Because we had to do several different applications, you know, trying to get different companies to even look at it, and they're just, you know, just waiting to hear back, decline due to class, decline due to class, and lack of MFA, waiting to hear back, waiting to hear back. Travelers, we went to them twice. I mean, we want the Travelers on the builder's risk over another company. I mean, they saved like $24,000, $25,000 on that, so, you know, I didn't want to... Well, last year, we looked at other companies and couldn't find anybody because of the losses. Now, our best loss ratio was six years ago. That year fell off, so now really your five-year rate ratio is right there. And like I said, that's where it's coming from, a lot of it. And once, hopefully, get that open and moved.
Get that open.
But it's gonna, you know, bite the bullet until...
Steel and block there, it's moving ahead.
Yeah, we, we, you know, they, we had that one visit up there that's...
Sure.
And I looked at going to a higher deductible, $5,000 deductible, and that was going to save us $2,000 a year. And that's, I mean, the claims that you'd, it's a question more for right now, so...
So MFA, I don't know...
Multi-auth authentication for us, when...
Sure, when people log in, you got to, okay.
That's what they're all, multi-factor authentication. That's what they're all looking at.
Sure.
I mean, especially since COVID, you have a lot of people out there, and they're working from home, and, you know, if all they needs is that password, and somebody else gets hold of it, and they're out there doing things, and, or, you know, then they go online somewhere else, and it... So that is the, the main thing. I mean, once that happens, I mean, I'm going to continue looking. I mean, I still got a couple that I'm waiting to hear from, but right now I don't. So right now, as of April 1, there would not be any coverage on cyber until we get that, and then I'll have to go out and get the application as soon as it's implemented and go from there. And that's the only thing I can tell you on that right now, because I mean, it's, that's the hotspot for all companies right now. But mainly the, the liability is where mainly the increases are coming in at.
Were we last year, 160, 80, something like that?
The premium? $204,660.
I thought it was...
Yeah, we went up $46,335 from last year. Which, yeah. I mean, back in 14...
One time we were like 164, 165, but that was our good year.
15, you were, 15, you were at 242. And then it started coming down. We went to 164, 165.
Right.
And then we thought it was going to go up and went back to Travelers, and they came in at 153. So, yeah, that was the year. From then on, it's jumped up since. But right now, that's, as soon as I hear something on the cyber, I'll get with you, but...
That was the, the cyber part last year?
Last year, that was, I think I told you, maybe when I was talking about work comp. Been to a couple meetings as far as cyber, they're talking about cyber all the time, and it's like, you know, what are you looking at? Well, a lot of these companies are looking 200 and 300% increases from prior year. I think we're at about, maybe 5,000 for the year. But that's probably definitely going to double or triple, on my guess, I mean...
Not that I always appreciate it, but they go staying in business, I understand.
They, but that's where, I mean, as soon as I can get something as to, as far as with the MFA, I think, you know, we can get something for sure. But right now, everybody's turning it down. So on the renewal, on the package portion, we're looking at $250,951.
Can I real quick talk about another horse while I'm thinking about it? The new jail site. What is our coverage as, do we elevate, or do we do like a... Because I remember, you remember when we built the church, the auditorium?
Right.
Trustees we had just talked, and I pulled a trigger on full insurance, and I remember coming home that evening, or morning, after that wind, and it was all on the ground, so...
When we first looked at doing it, I shopped it out, and we were looking at the total package. And at that time, and I, what's, your else rep is?
Jack.
Jack Kraus. And he said right at 30 million. And the, and the package was more, the quote was like 36, I think. And now we're looking at maybe 40?
38.
38. And a lot of that, in the beginning, was lands excavation and prepping the land and, you know, underground and so forth like that. So he thought that 30 would be fine, and I think, I'm pretty sure I put it in at 35. I can double-check, but I'm pretty sure I put it in at 35. So you have to insure it on day one for the end of the...
Okay.
So that's what it's insured. Now, if it gets up to, say, 38, or once we get going, like we had that meeting in December where we came out and had a loss control visit, and they walked it and looked at it, and they'll have another one here coming up. And if they see that, or if we see that we need to make an adjustment, we can make an adjustment.
But like, we were out there today, and you know, they're starting to get locked in the air. I mean, like, say we have a storm in it.
Right.
So are we okay? I'm just trying to think outside the box, so...
Probably wouldn't need to make any adjustments until we get maybe three to six months out from the end of a, and if we see at that point, hey, we're way over budget and we need to increase that, then we can do that.
Put that horse to bed, then, thank you.
So I just need to get an approval to go on with this and a signature on both, and...
So I move, we accept the property crime liability package premium of $250,951 as presented.
I'll second that, and that's without the cybersecurity right now, right?
Yes, and then soon, like I said, as soon as I can get something, if I hear something before April 1, I'll get it implemented then, but really waiting on the MFA.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any more questions or comments? All right, if not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Right there. Auto liability. Let me hand this over here to you. You're used to doing this.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
And like I said, as soon as I hear something on the other, you know, I'll continue looking, or if I hear something come out there, I'll get that. But like I said, until we get the, that's all they're talking about on cyber. It's one of the hottest things right now as far as cyber liabilities, so...
Paying a bunch of money.
All right.
Most priority right now.
Yeah, yeah.
And we have pulled the trigger on it, so we'll keep you posted.
Okay, and then I'll just stop by or give you an invoice. I didn't bring one with me, or I'll just bring one over tomorrow, if that's okay?
Sounds good.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, appreciate you. Have a good evening. Get out in the sun for a minute. So up next is a library reappointment. Terry Phillips on there. For a library board member.
So I move, we appoint, reappoint Terry Phillips to the Jefferson County Library Board for four years through June of 2026.
I'll second that motion. All right, any more comments or questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And certify polling location. Did he call you back?
Yes, so...
She's got it.
Yep. So Tabitha stopped in the office the other day, said that she received a letter from elementary school wanting to change the polling location from deputy elementary to the firehouse. Josh Klein went out yesterday and verified that it's ADA compliant. Spoke to Mike Hazelwood, they're perfectly fine with it. It's going to work for the clerk's office, everything's good to go.
So what do we do? Just make a motion and approve the polling locations as presented? Does it include spelling? How many different ways can we spell Neville's Grove?
I did not create that.
I know, I know, I know. I'm not saying that. I just wonder. I, I've seen it so many different ways. And every time I write it down, I'm like. It's different here that I.
I'll second that motion to approve the.
I know that I made a motion, but.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I, I moved that we accept the polling locations as presented. Sorry, now we.
I second the motion to verify this polling location as submitted.
Any more questions or comments? If not, all in favor say aye. All right. So, any comments from the, oh, Troy, sorry.
I don't have anything specific unless you guys have questions for me. I would tell you about my frustrations with the day, but I won't get into it, so.
Still headache.
Yeah, still headache, so, but, but no, it's, if you guys have questions for me.
So on the new building, is that what the headaches are about? I need to go there if it is. Okay. Uh, or the potential new building.
You're talking about the zoning and all that?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, that's still with, um, Pat McGrath.
Oh, okay.
Uh, the advisory board meeting, uh, there was, the EMA advisory board discussed it and kind of prompted me to follow back up with him. He's had the applications and trying to get all the paperwork squared away and he thanked me for giving it a kickstart and said he'd be back in touch shortly.
Okay.
And that was just earlier, earlier this week, Monday, I think.
So the final estimated cost was?
Oh, um, the last, well, when we did the numbers for the, with the RFP the last time. It was two fifty, three hundred thousand. Um, and of course, that was before the current inflation. So I can't imagine what it would be now. I'm sure we'd have to go back and.
Sure, oh, yeah.
It was, yeah.
Scaled it down, like you said, that was.
We scaled it back and it was still well over two fifty, two sixty, and I think it was in the two eighties. But that's been several, several months now.
It's probably three hundred thousand now, the increase on materials.
I'm just trying to gather an information to finalize this ARP plan. I wanna make sure that.
Right.
Don't go, oh, yeah, he said two hundred and eighty thousand.
But an existing building was still qualified, right?
But I, I think, I mean, based on that last letter from Andrew, which said if you receive less than ten million dollars, you can count all of it as lost revenue. So yes, we could do things, so.
Everything we received from the RFP though, just specifically said good for like fifteen days or thirty days and it's been.
That's, that's a, that's a long time for some now.
Absolutely, well, especially these days, for sure.
Sure. It's good till tomorrow. So, all right, like, like I said, I'm just trying to gather information and based on what Andrew said, that's something we think we can include in that, so.
I, I think Bobby's pretty close, two eighty, give or take a few thousand is about where it was at.
Sure, but.
Then.
Then.
Then it now.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Your date's twenty-first is good.
Okay, thank you.
Get the golf cart out. It's weather.
Yeah, I, you know, I guess I.
Well, you'd have it in a trailer, right?
Uh, there's no trailer for it.
That's your trailer?
That's, yeah, that, that's out there. I've been using my personal trailer. There's no, there's no trailer for that car. It didn't come with a trailer.
I guess probably need serial number.
Yeah, and I, I don't know why, I just didn't think of it as a.
I just play golf.
I just spaced it, yeah. I mean, we don't use it that much. I just kind of spaced it and, but yeah, it probably should be. Liability if nothing else.
I liked it in May. Thank you.
Yeah, good, it's, it's a nice car. It's a nice car. Thank you all.
Thank you, Troy.
Thank you.
Well, all right, now, anybody out in the audience?
She's under the clock.
There you go, she's spotted.
You're under the clock.
She can't hide. On the clock.
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't know exactly what he was, I'll go up there. I don't know exactly what he was mentioning. I just heard him say cybersecurity, so that was kind of a good thing, actually. It, not a good thing, but yeah.
Insurance for cyber.
Exactly. I just, it's talks of something that I've been working on a lot. So I'm just gonna read this. The Southeastern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, which is SRPC. And they are in partnership with Purdue Center for Regional Development, which I refer to them mostly as PCRD. And so yesterday, they announced the launch of Indiana's first regional digital inclusion plan. Uh, the focus of this plan is making broadband existent, affordable and accessible. For everyone in the southeastern Indiana region, so.
This plan is for, for down here?
Yes, definitely.
Is it specifically for down here?
Yes. Well, it's specifically for the southeast region and so.
Okay, I just didn't know if it was a state plan or.
No, it's not a state plan. No, it's just our, our region. The southeast region, so all of the counties that border us actually. The first thing, they give you steps and the steps are great on, on what you should do. First step, you need to get a task force together. You need to get a group of individuals within the community in various areas. A part of a team meeting together at least once a month that are going to actively be working on this. We have the task force. Yeah, it's a great task force. It's fantastic. Once you get that task force, then you need to get your local leaders to pass an ordinance saying that your community is ready to be broadband ready. And the steps that we need to do, we passed it last week. And so the next thing after that is you submit an application to the Indiana Broadband Office. To make Jefferson County a broadband-ready community and you submit that ordinance to the state as well. What that does is we will be a broadband-ready community. It doesn't stop there, though.
I say, cause we have done much to get broadband ready.
Once, once we're, once we're officially a broadband-ready community, this sends a signal to telecommunications industry. And that our community has taken steps to reduce barriers to broadband infrastructure investment. In the meantime, um, it, it relies a lot on us getting awareness spread throughout the community. There are lots of tools that I, I need to send to Sarah so that she can get them on the county website.
I'm, I'm just chuckling because that requires broadband and these people.
But there's also things. There's also, there's two different sites that I'm sure people don't know about. There's a site through Indiana Farm Bureau. And they asked that residents would. Repet- not, not just once, you've done it and you're done. Um, maybe in the morning, maybe in the afternoon, maybe in the evening, get onto that site if you have internet and test your. Um, test your strength, test your signal, because then that lets, you know, this, this plan, it helps this plan prove that. This area needs, um, internet. Also, if you don't have internet and you can't do that. I've told Sarah, if someone calls into you and they're complaining about not having internet, immediately send them to me. Because there is a website that you can put in that person's address. And then that just creates another dot in our county and the more dots we have, the better it looks. We had, um, a man, Ernie Holtry, he's the program manager for Indiana Broadband Office. He came down, uh, yesterday and met with the task force. He gave us some great ideas. Um, he's communicating with me, uh, now and helping get me some contacts. For the network providers in our area, because those network providers need to talk to you guys to see what it is that they are needing. Because there is funding for them and also what it is that you guys are needing because there is funding for you guys. So as long as, um, you know, everyone stays involved and. We can just educate everyone in the community, I think it's gonna be a really good thing.
So we need another task force?
No, we have one.
Double down on the one we got?
That they're, they're, they're a good task force, yeah.
So I think as we take the plan and put some specifics, it sounds like we're gonna get to these people giving in. The Regional Development Authority, that's one of their big plans is making it broadband accessible, so maybe we can. Tap into some of that as well.
Yeah.
So, just another resource to, I mean, I think we've, we've talked, you know, it's, it's, how do we? How do we convince a certain utility to help us out or how can we find our way around a certain utility so we can help ourselves out? So.
That's what I don't understand. I mean, the money's there. Why more of them aren't? Not just, just to build the plant, but then you got your billing monthly, you know.
Yeah, and it's just, it's, it's, I mean, it's just gotta be the financial side of it. I mean, it's.
Yeah, there's, and, yeah, there's definitely funding out there. It's just having, having conversations, so. I'll be emailing you guys, when do you wanna have meetings?
Well, yeah, I mean, we've talked, you know, we need to get the couple that are provided and maybe the one that owns the polls. Even though they don't do much with the polls, maybe we can convince them it's in their best interest to do something with the polls and.
Or maybe they need new polls, yeah, I don't know. I have no idea.
Sure. And like I said, I mean, we've, we've often think, well, we gotta get it to the house, but maybe it's getting a, like a tower. Close to the house and then it's all wifi from, from there.
We have one of our task force members here with us. She's been very helpful. Um, Judy is, when we were trying to put together this, uh, plan. The thing that we were lacking is input. You gotta have data and you gotta have input when you're making a plan and so. Um, we, we started it a little bit late, but one of the ideas that she had was. The library, which I don't know if even the whole entire community knows this, but if you don't have internet. You can go to the library and you can borrow a hotspot. And when individuals would borrow that hotspot, she had a survey for them to fill out that survey information when they brought it back. Then they could have it for an additional week. So it was just a little incentive to get people, cause no one wants to fill out a survey. I get it. I don't wanna fill out surveys half the time.
Call me.
But if we don't, if we don't get people getting onto the stuff that I'm gonna have Sarah putting on the website, then.
I mean, in those cases.
About not having internet, make sure you're one of those people that got on there and did something, cause. You can't prove your point if you don't have data and.
Sure.
That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to get that data out there and she's, she's been very helpful.
Good. Thanks.
That's it.
That was a very good group you brought into the meeting over here today.
Yeah, we do have some doctors and physicians, um. Mental health physicians and physical doctors. Uh, one that is practicing currently at KDH. They're interested in, um, the award that the county received for JREC. So they met with that subcommittee and Mr. Lee was in that meeting and they gave their presentation and.
Kind of exciting.
I mean, we, since I think the commissioners get to hire the program coordinator. We're gonna have to pull from a few committees to get some folks involved to do that. And then like that, your, that committee, once we, we'll set up, we can set up that committee, I guess, at the next meeting and then. They can make a recommendation to the commissioners and we can approve it and then, and try to get this going, so we get someone lined up to start. Giving you someone full-time that can beat the bushes and find the stuff.
Direct it, yeah. Appreciate that.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? You look awful peaceful back there, AJ. Heather?
Um, we have our State Board of Accounts exit conference tomorrow morning at, um, nine AM. So that is for our audit on two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty. And then I hear that probably later in the year, they will be back to do twenty-one. And, um, I'm still working on the ordinance with Pat for. Our inventory list and what levels. I'm trying to figure out exactly what tier. He wanted input on that, so I'm not sure if you guys have any thoughts about that. Um, exactly how far you wanna track inventory. Um, but other than that, that's, I'm working on organizing grants for the future. So that is a whole new thing we are working diligently with.
Thank you. Anything with Sarah?
No, my focus has really just been the IT stuff. Yeah, that's been keeping me very, very busy.
I bet. All right, thank you. Mr. Bobby?
Had the jail meeting at the site today, very productive and. If anything, they may be just a little bit ahead of schedule, wouldn't you say?
I was impressed.
And then, uh, we met with IT, Ovation and all the vendors that intertwine and I think we've got that. Pretty well narrowed down, so everything looks, looks good.
Looks, looks like something. You've got steel and block.
And concrete.
Mm-hmm.
Pipe sticking up.
So, I mean, I think, well, it wasn't a lot of, well, I didn't personally go to a lot of road stuff, but road school was good with. Uh, some stormwater management information, some, uh, air, airport. Development information, uh, some, uh, I guess we call it employee engagement information kind of stuff, so. Uh, putting together some things like that, but it's always good to find people who are in that business and try to. Get information from them that you can, uh, use to make things better, so. It's good. We did have a kickoff meeting for the updating of the ordinances, the zoning and subdivision. And I think in the end, it's gonna be just one ordinance rather than having to worry about, well, this definition says this, but this one is, I'm trying to get them all so they have the same definitions. So moving that forward, gonna go first, kind of put it ahead of the, the list to, to do is gonna be solar and. Wind and so get that kind of ironed out rather than, cause this probably won't get finished for. Probably early next year when they get finalized, but, uh, so try to get those on a fast track to, cause we know those. Although I really haven't come to the, the surveyor's office asking about, can I put in a solar farm here? So trying to catch people's attentions as they go, so we're trying to. I don't know, we'll catch all of them at the pass, but catch some of them at the pass, just so people have a say in what they can and what they should, what they can do.
Yeah, all right. Well, I guess, uh, next treatment, residential treat, I'm gonna call residential treatment train, just so I can keep the train attached to it for right now. Is next month on the twenty-first here, four o'clock. Uh, like I said, Bob got to be there today for, pretty interesting, I think. Yeah, I know, I know. She brought some good things in, so. Cause I got a heck of an email the other day, what the feds are passing out like seven hundred million for mental health, uh, in our community, so. See how that plays out. That's a lot. Phew, yeah. And I mean, United States, not just Indiana.
Seven hundred million?
Yeah, you remember that email? Yep. Interesting things, so.
Because, um, we talked about this ARP fund plan. I'll try to get that together the next couple weeks and get that out so we start looking at it and publish it. I know a lot of people are, fire departments, I think, most all of them have, I don't know.
I think we've been to all of them, except in the city, but.
Yeah, most of them.
Lot of responses from most of them.
Yeah, I think Sarah's got several of them down.
Some of the water companies too, right? Did Garrett turn one in from Hanover, I think? The ridge did.
Yeah.
Canon? Canon turn one in?
Pretty sure.
Yeah, I think Canon did too.
So, hopefully by the next meeting, I'll have that out, at least a draft for people to look at.
I make the most of the journey, let's save one.
I second that.
All in favor of a journey, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you all.